Hello! I hope you can see and hear me, all right? Just wave your hands if you can. Yeah, that's it. Some nodding going on, that's always a good sign. Very good. We've got amazing ways of communicating with each other these days, haven't we? We've got all this electronic stuff, but there's nothing like a good old-fashioned nod, is there, just to do the work? That's lovely. Okay, so I gather I'm talking to parents and carers, which is lovely, and then early years staff, childminders, people from family hubs, as well as local authority staff. And I think I glanced at one of the images that came up, and there were some children there, so hello, children. It may not be terribly fascinating for you all the time, you young folks here, but it's lovely to see you all the same. Okay, well, look, I thought I'd begin with a little poem, just to get us in the mood. Here's a little poem I wrote that I sometimes use at the beginning when I'm doing performances and shows with young children, because it's something they can join in with very quickly. So I'll do it, and then I know you may be entirely on your own, but with a little bit of courage and a little bit of fun, you can do it yourself. So it just goes like this: Something's drastic, something's drastic. My nose is made of plastic. Something's drastic, something's drastic. My ears are elastic. Something's drastic, something's drastic. We're fantastic! Looking for your lips to move? Tastic! Yes, you didn't, but never mind. All right, you got the idea, we're fantastic. So I'm gonna do it again, and this time, I tell you what, I'll do the "something's drastic", and then you do the gestures: point to your nose, point to your ears, and then when we do "we're fantastic", fling your hands in the air, because this is a way in which we join words to movement. Terribly important with very young children. If you want a name for it, we'll call it the Kinetic Principle. Kinetic movement of the body. Kinetic principle: you attach words to body movements, it makes them easier to remember and easier just to actually perform when you're doing it. So here we go, we're gonna do it. You can go along with the "something's drastic", okay? So think of this as just a little movement class that you're doing as well, and I bet some of you do yoga and things like that. Well, why not do a poem at the same time? Here we go, you're ready. One, two, three. And: Something's drastic, something's drastic. My nose is made of plastic. Something's drastic, something's drastic. My ears are elastic. Something's drastic, something's drastic. We're fantastic! That's it! I can see arms in the air, I can see people enjoying it, some people resolutely sitting there, very fed up, not to worry. Okay, so there you go. There's a little poem that, if you like, expresses some of the things that I wanted to say today. And as we've started there, why not let's do another poem? I was out with some boys and girls by the side of the River Thames. I live in North London, but occasionally venture all the way to the River Thames. And we were underneath a railway bridge, and you'll know that if you take 20 or 30 children underneath a railway bridge and a train goes over, there's a law, maybe it's in the Bible, I'm not quite sure where it is, that the children will all go "Ahh!" like that for as long as the train's going over. And as an adult, I sometimes think, well, if you're with children who are screaming, it might be quite nice to see whether there's something else you can do, see how creative I am. So I thought, well, I wonder if you can feel the movement of the train, so you can see it and hear it. Can you feel the movement? Sure enough, I could feel, when I put my hand on the wall, holding up the bridge, I could feel the rhythm of the train. And then as I said that and thought that, "feel the rhythm of the train", I felt the beginning of a poem. And this is where you can all make poems if you want to. It's very simple, you start with the world around you. So I said, "Feel the rhythm of the train." Hands on the bridge, feel the rhythm of the train. Oh, it's got a nice rhythm, even just as I'm saying it. So there's the word rhythm, and it's about rhythm. Hands on the bridge, feel the rhythm of the train. Anything else that's got rhythms around us? Because this is the thing about poems and stories with young children, the phrase that's been used is they carry a cognitive load. What does that mean? That means that these stories carry a lot of knowledge with them. So we often think of them as just wordplay, having fun, about emotions, about feelings, there may be all those things, but they're actually often about how the world works. So if you think of all the fairy stories that we know, nursery rhymes, a lot of them are in actual fact about the world around us. You may know a book called Where the Wild Things Are. I was working with some children on Where the Wild Things Are, if you know that book, there's a picture there of a teddy bear hanging from what looks like a clothesline. And the children started talking about that, and one of them said, "Oh, he's hanging from the clothesline because he's wet, because he went out into the garden and got wet, and so he's drying off." There's an example of how stories are starting points for children to figure out how the world works, yeah? So back on the bridge, here we are. Hand on the bridge, feel the rhythm of the train. I'm talking about how the world works. What else has got a rhythm? Hands on the window, feel the rhythm of the rain. Hand on your throat, feel the rhythm of your talk. Hands on your leg, feel the rhythm of your walk. Hands in the sea, feel the rhythm of the tide. Hands on your heart, feel the rhythm inside. Hands on the rhythm, feel the rhythm of the rhyme. Hands on your life, feel the rhythm of time. Hands on your life, feel the rhythm of time. Again, hands on your life, feel the rhythm of time. So there's a poem that links us all up. It's about rhythm, there's a bit of wordplay in it, a lot of repetition, which is absolutely great for kids to get the idea that, to get these phrases into their heads, because one of the things we're doing with reading that is so important, one of the key things we're doing is showing children that there's all this talky stuff, which we do apparently quite naturally, but this stuff in books, it's not a natural language. We've invented, it may not, because you're all probably readers, we've actually invented a rather strange chunk of language that we call writing. And for 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7-year-olds, they're actually learning this, it's almost like a dialect, you know, like maybe, you know, if you think of, I'm a Londoner, I don't speak the way people do from Glasgow, or Belfast, or Newcastle. When I go there, I have to kind of tune in to hear it, to hear what people are saying. Well, in a way, that's what children are doing with writing. The great thing about poems is you learn the written mode, we call it a written mode. So the great thing about poems is they're almost like a bridge between the way we speak and the way we write, because sometimes poems have quite speaky things in them. I didn't say you're going to put your hands on the bridge and then feel the rhythm of the train, I made it more squashy than that. Hands on the bridge, feel the rhythm of the train. So it's almost like you're purifying it a bit and just having the middle. But this is one of the ways in which children learn the written mode through the oral mode of poetry. It's like a bridge between the two. Fantastically important. Okay, but I'm not gonna leave you alone with that, because you've got to do the poem now. Oh, yes, that's right. So you remember those gestures? I said, I'll swam through it quickly again, and then you're gonna do it, even the ones who were reluctant last time. Hands on the bridge, feel the rhythm of the train. That was the first bit, wasn't it? Then there's the window, remember, the window and the rain, so you get that bit. Hands on the window, feel the rhythm of the rain. Then I went to my throat. Hands on my throat, feel the rhythm of the talk. Then we went legs, it rhymes, so you get that, it's gonna be walk. Hands on my legs, feel the rhythm of the walk. Hands in the sea, feel the rhythm of the tide. Nice little movement you can do there. What was next? Tide inside, it was the heart, wasn't it? Hands on your heart, feel the rhythm inside. Then we went to the poem. Hands on the rhythm, you can bang your finger. Hands on the rhythm, feel the rhythm of the rhyme. And then the end, hands on your life, you can hug yourself, your life. Hands on your life, feel the rhythm of time. And in a way, it's quite mysterious, that last line. It's okay for poems to be mysterious. "Is there anybody there?", said the traveller, knocking on the moonlit door. And that poem, if ever you read it, you never find out who the traveller is, and you never find out who the people listening. What? What's the point of that then? Well, that's interesting, isn't it? So, the rhythm of time, what does Rosen mean? The rhythm of time? Has time got a rhythm? Has it? Oh, maybe it has. Or maybe it's a week? That's another week, that's a rhythm, isn't it? All sorts of rhythms we have, don't we? Seasons, birth, marriage, death, we have, that's another rhythm. Anyway, I won't go there. There you go. So we know the poem now, don't we? I'm gonna help you with it. I'm gonna go one, two, three, four. Remember, the first line is, "Hands on the bridge, feel the rhythm of the train." Here we go. One, two, three, four. Hands on the bridge, feel the rhythm of the train. Window, hands on the window, feel the rhythm of the rain. Throat, hands on your throat, feel the rhythm of your talk. Leg, hands on your leg, feel the rhythm of your walk. Sea, hands in the sea, feel the rhythm of the tide. Heart, hands on your heart, feel the rhythm inside. Rhythm, hands on the rhythm, feel the rhythm of the rhyme. Hands on your life, feel the rhythm of time. Again, hands on your life, feel the rhythm of time. What? Hands on your life, we could slow down, like the train. Hands on your life, feel the rhythm of time. There we are, and you can sort of swim along with that. And now, I hope most of you have now learnt that poem, so you could then do that with some children, actually you can just take it away. So that's one way in which we pass on poems. We've got books, but we can actually pass them on orally, or we can find the poem on the computer or in a book. So that poem is often called the rhythm of time, some people call it that, or hands on the bridge. You can find it on the computer, so you can print it off and deprive me of my income, I don't mind. Or you can find it in a book called Michael Rosen's Big Book of Bad Things. It's in that book, along with lots of other poems as well. Okay, so there, but we can't count that by way of intro. So what I wanted to do now was just talk a little bit more about what we're doing with this stuff, and I was going to sort of say it, and then I remembered that in this book that's only come out this week, or last week, it's called Ready for Spaghetti, or if you're American, it's Ready for a Spaghetti, and it rhymes a little bit better. But anyway, Ready for Spaghetti. I wrote a little intro about everything that I really want to say today. So I'm going to read a little bit of this, and then I'm gonna read you some of the poems, maybe we'll learn some of them as we go along, I'm not quite sure, we're gonna improv about that, and I'm going to say to you why it is I wrote them that way, and what I hope and think children will get from them. So here's me talking to the, it says, "A note to grown-ups", so there you go. By the time we're about 3 years old, we've learnt all the sounds of our language, and that's the same all over the world. It is a quite incredible thing, when you look at that baby, newborn baby, and you think how short a time it is, just those 3 years, and you've learnt all the sounds of the language. If you want the technical word for it, in English it's forty-four phonemes, but you don't have to worry about that, but that's the sounds of the language. And those of you who speak other languages, and I bet quite a few of you do, you'll know that there's some sounds you make in the other language, or other languages you speak, that you don't say in English. So I speak French, and the way French people say the "R" sound is not the way I do, so I say "r", or sometimes in some words I don't say it at all, do I? Like "card", I don't pronounce the "R" at all. Go to Scotland, and they say "card". So they go "rr". And then if you go to France, they say "r". If you want to say "I take it", you say "je le prend". We don't say that, it's safe, if we live in Essex or London, not usually, but we've learnt the sounds of our language, or languages, if you've got 3-year-olds, they'll be maybe bilingual 3-year-olds, and I know some, they'll know more sounds. So how do we do it? How do we get the sounds of the language? Well, mostly through a mix of copying the words of the people around us, so we can see children imitating us, can't we? We can see them, 1, 2, 3-year-olds doing that. And also, we actually invent sounds of our own, so you'll actually hear children making sounds that we ourselves don't make. And then what they do is actually weed out those sounds. So I said forty-four phonemes. Quite often, little toddlers, little 1, 2, and 3-year-olds may actually have more phonemes and then reduce them. At the same time, our brains are discovering how things work, like how if you drop a spoon, it lands on the floor and stays there. You've got to discover that. How food can be hot or cold, yes? Or sticky or smooth? So you're feeling that as a taste, isn't it? How a ball rolls. I remember my 2-year-old, 3-year-old I think she was, and she saw the ball roll and she laughed, because it was a surprise. Things had stayed rather still before then, but then she saw the ball roll and laughed, and laughter often comes with surprise, and surprise often comes with laughter. Or you might find out how blocks can be piled up or indeed pushed down. And we, hundreds of other things, that all of us as adults, we take for granted. Now, to figure all these things out, we need to explore something very important: how words and language mean...
Words and language.
Mean stuff. Don't forget to mute, folks, don't forget to mute. So I'll say that again. We need to explore how words and language mean stuff. We sometimes get tied up very much with the mechanics of reading and the sound, but all the time, what really matters is, does it mean something? Okay? They're not just a stream of sounds. And this is where books can play a fantastic part. There's no point in us, as it were, being able to scribble or even to be able to read if we don't know what it means. It's really crucial. Now, so books play the most important part here, because they help children to link the words with how we string words together. And the words for that is grammar or syntax, don't be frightened by that, we all do it all the time, as I'm talking now. If I say, "Hi, how are you?", I'm using grammar, all right? So there's nothing to be afraid of with that word. And how we link words with pictures, with the image, yeah? And we learn how language fits together when it's written down, which is, as I've said, very different from the way in which we chat to each other, yeah? So introducing children to the sound of writing, aha, very important. The sound of writing, what an odd phrase to say, because you just think of the look of writing, but I'm talking now, today, about the sound of writing. Already done it with rhythm, with the rhythm on the hands on, I can't even remember the poem, "Hands on the Bridge", or the one about "Something's drastic". Actually, why not have a little break, we'll have another one as well. Here's one that goes: He had a little sticker and he had a little ticket, and he took the little sticker and he stuck it to the ticket. Now, he hasn't got a sticker and he hasn't got a ticket, he's got a bit of both, which he calls a little "sticket". Right, you think you could do that one? Here we go. So the sticker's in the right hand and the ticket's in the left, always, okay? So every time I go like that, you know that's the sticker, and every time I go like that, you know it's the ticket. Kinetic principle, okay? Here we go. He had a little sticker, that's it, okay, it was the right hand, here we go. He had a little sticker and he had a little ticket, and he took the little sticker, what did he do with it? He stuck it to the ticket. You could do that. Now, he hasn't got a sticker and he hasn't got a ticket, he's got a bit of both, which he calls a little "sticket". Okay, so can you do that? Right, here we go. Practice, okay? Get your hands ready, remember? So it's sticker on the right-hand side, ticket on the left, we'll say it nice and slowly. He had a little sticker and he had a little ticket, and he took the little sticker and he, what did he do with it? Stuck it to the ticket, that's it. Here we go. Boom. Now, he hasn't got a sticker and he hasn't got a ticket, he's got a bit of both, which he calls a little "sticket". Okay, now we're gonna do it fast, okay? I'm gonna go one, two, three, and we're gonna do it. Here we go. One, two, three. He had a little sticker and he had a little ticket, and he took the little sticker and he stuck it to the ticket. Now, he hasn't got a sticker and he hasn't got a ticket, he's got a bit of both, which he calls a little "sticket". Well done, you've learnt that one as well. That's in a book I did called Mustard, Custard, Grumble Belly and... No, it isn't, I lie, I lie, sorry. That one is in, that's in Michael Rosen's Book of Nonsense. Yes, "Something's drastic" is in mustard, custard, grumble belly and gravy. So inside my head, I've got this index, but it gets a bit muddled up, especially since I was ill 2 years ago. Yes, I didn't do my gag at the beginning, which is nice to be here, which means 2 things, nice to be here, but also nice to be alive. Right, where do we get to? Okay, so we're introducing children to the sound of writing. So each of these little poems I'm doing with you, when you find them on the page and perform them, you're introducing children to that thing, the sound of writing. And now, one way to do this and to make it fun, okay, so sometimes it's quite difficult for children, because you read out something that's quite technical, or I don't know, instructions on how to make an armchair or something, and it's a bit difficult and muddly. But how to make it fun is with rhyme, rhythm, repetition and play, okay? Rhyme, rhythm, repetition and play. You can use all 4 at the same time, the poems I've done so far, or not necessarily, you could just use one or the other. We'll come to, it's quite technical, but we'll come to that. So that's where I say, "I come in, that's my job, I do that." Rhyme, rhythm, repetition and play, that's what I've made my job over the years, okay? And so the poems in this book, I'm gonna read you some, are so that a child will be tickled by the sounds that the poems make, and that they like, and what they mean, and in this case, what I've done is a journey through the day. So some poems and stories are about things that are about miles and miles away, and that's great. I mean, fantasy is fantastic, and sometimes I do there. I've got a book over there called Fluff the Farting Fish. As far as I know, that is fantasy. I mean, it's possible it's not, maybe if you've got a, anyway, I won't go there, but anyway. So I'm very interested in fantasy, but also very, very interested in the really, really ordinary stuff about the day, and how you can make fun with language in that, and that's where this book comes in. And so this is a journey through the day, from sunup to lights out. And what I hope is that children will copy the sounds and play with the words, and that this helps them to discover that talking is about choosing what we want to say. I'm gonna say that again. Talking is about choosing what we want to say. That is an incredibly important thing about language, easily forgotten when children get a bit older and go to school and so on, and in schools, because they're being taught all sorts of things about language, some of which I happen to disagree with, but sometimes the idea that children choose how to talk, and we all are choosing how to talk, just like I am now, is a fundamental about language. It's a fundamental democratic thing about human beings. We choose how to talk, yes? And we talk in lots of different ways, and hopefully most of the time, we accept how we talk, how we each talk. In fact, on that, I interviewed somebody this week who has a stammer, and I've interviewed him for the radio, he's got a whole half-hour programme about his stammer. And he's only 23, and he said, "The fundamental thing I had to learn was that I'm a guy with a stammer. That's me. That's how I, that's how I am. I've learnt how to talk, I've reached a point where I talk the way I talk, but I've got a stammer, and that's me." And what I hope, and it's what he said, why it came on the radio with me, it'll be going out soon, all right, is that people will accept that that's the person I am. That's the way I am, and that's the way we are, and we choose fundamentally, either deeply in our unconscious or consciously, how we talk. Okay? And so now I'm gonna read you one or two of these things, just to give you a sense, and I'll give you an idea of why it is that I did it, and I'll show you the pictures, okay? These are by the wonderful artist Polly Dunbar, and I'll say this about words and pictures in books. So maybe you know a book, a very rare book, called We're Going on, how's it go? We're Going on a, what is it now? We're Going on a, an elephant? No, Going on a, no, I can't remember it. Anyway, you know the one, it goes: We're going on a bear hunt, we're going to catch a big one. What a beautiful day! We're not scared. Uh-oh, grass, long wavy grass. We can't go over it, we can't go under it. Oh no, we gotta go through it! Now, maybe you know that book. As I say, it's a very rare book, so rare, I haven't actually got a copy of it here. But in that book, just one second while I go and find it, okay? In that book, there are words and pictures. Now, the pictures don't actually tell the same story as the words, and this is the same with all picture books, and it's very important, because after all, it says, "We're going on a bear hunt", but it doesn't say, "I'm a girl and I'm going on a bear hunt", and "I'm a boy or a young man", a lot of argument about that, by the way. It does, the baby isn't saying, "going on a bear hunt", and as we know, there's also a dog. So all that is another story. So if you're the 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 150th reader of this book, all this stuff, there are no words for it. So you're in your head relating the words you hear to the pictures you see, and relating the pictures you see to the words you're hearing or reading. That's called a relay. So it's a good thing to remember this, there's a relay, just like you have relays at school, you remember where you used to kind of, or maybe swimming relays, where you swim up one end and then the next person dives in, and they're going to and fro. So it's a to-and-fro thing. And so when you get to the end of We're Going on a Bear Hunt, and this mysterious picture, can you see it? Yes, up there of the bear, okay? How many times have children or adults come to me and said, "What's the bear doing? Is the bear sad?". And I always say, "I don't know, I didn't do the picture." And then children tell me. They tell me things like, "Well, he wants to go shopping." That seems to be quite reasonable, of course the bear might want to go shopping. Or they say, "He wants to go swimming." Or they might say "she", or "they". Okay, they say that the bear likes paddling in the sea, and sometimes children have got another story. They say, "He only wanted to be friends." So when he was running after them, now this is terribly important in books, I call it harvesting, where the children say stuff that indicates they've remembering and using what's come before. Harvesting, this is all a lot of brain work going on here. This is very important about reading, even the tiniest children, 2 and 3-year-olds, will stare at the bear. No credit to me, this is the wonderful work of Helen Oxenbury, using the principles invented in the 1600s and 1500s of using shape and form and line and colour to express emotion. You know, the famous artist Rembrandt, he was one of the greatest who did that, and Helen Oxenbury is in that tradition. Look at that light on the sea, okay? Why is there that light in the sea? Somewhere, there must be, sorry, I'm not showing it properly, somewhere there must be the moon, but there's no moon in the picture. Oh, yes it is, it's up there. You see, you go looking, why is there light on the sea? Because of the moon, okay? So the bear, all right, the children are asking, "What happened to the bear?", and they say, "Oh, well, he only wanted to be friends." So they're harvesting what they can see in those pictures. In those pictures, the bear is seemingly chasing the children, and they're scared, and the dog, and they hit just in time to shut the door. There's a little bit of what we call jeopardy or peril. Most children's books have a little bit of jeopardy or peril in them. Think of those books, long, long time ago, the Beatrix Potter books, even Peter Rabbit. There's jeopardy, isn't there? Where's the jeopardy come from? Mr McGregor, who once ate Peter's dad. You can't get bigger jeopardy than that. And the jeopardy in this, of course, is that the bear is scary. And then Helen has done this thing in the back, where the bear isn't scary anymore. So the child's got to figure all that out, and it's not in the words. And they see, when they see me, of course, they think that I'm the god of words, and that I'll know, but I don't, and I throw it back to the children and say, "You tell me." And then, of course, what we can do, if you're working in playgroups or schools or wherever you are, you can build on this to make poems, because all you need to do is have a little chorus, like, "I'm a bear." And then everybody comes up with what the bear is thinking. So, "I wanted to play with the children, I'm a bear." "I wanted to go shopping, I'm a bear." "I wanted to paddle in the sea, I'm a bear." Everybody can say the chorus, "I'm a bear", and everybody says what the bear is thinking. Do you remember one of the words I used? Repetition. If you use poems, you can make poems up just by repeating a line like that. "I'm a bear." Or it could be a sound, it could be splish, splosh, in the water, just like the sounds in bear hunts, you see? So, "I wanted to go shopping, splish, splosh." "I wanted to play with the kids, splish, splosh." Yeah? And that way, you can actually build up a poem out of a book that you're reading, and it'll widen and enlarge the meanings that the children make from the book. It makes the book matter to them. And that's what we're talking about, making language, making meanings matter, okay? Sometimes we get carried away, even I am, when I'm talking about these words like repetition and rhyme and rhythm. These are all words about language, but we've always got to bring it back to meaning and making it matter. Okay, so we'll carry on and just read one or two poems from Ready for Spaghetti, funny poems for funny kids, okay? And so I said, it's, what I've done is make it like a day. So we start in the morning, and we have, "Up, up, uppity up, the light shines through the window. Up, up, uppity up, here's my nose and here's my elbow. Up, up, uppity up, my feet are standing on the floor. Up, up, uppity up, my feet are taking me out the door." And there we've got, a girl, her room, and again, like I said with the relay, there's all sorts of stuff here that isn't in the poem. There's somebody in the bed, it's a little velvety rabbit, I think, and there's a books piled up. Ah, right, putting in a good argument for books there. And then we've got this child with her hair swinging in her jammie jams, all right? So she hasn't actually got dressed yet, so she's walking out the door. Well, all that is in that picture and in the... Well, all that is in that picture and in the, it's not in the poem. The poem, of course, is playing. It's playing with that word up. So it's, so there's wordplay in it. And of course, all words we can do, we can, what I call them, opening and closing them. So any word, you can say door, and then you can do what we do in English, which is add y's and consonants and say dory, dory, door. Okay, and dority, dority, door. And we can play with words. And there's nothing silly or trivial about that because what you're doing is exploring that stuff that I said before, the phonemes. Those forty four sounds that we make in English. Dority, dority, door. So those itties and lories and oies, all that stuff is what's in the language. And then when you play with it, all right, you're playing in the area of the children's own expertise, which is the physical aspect of language. Remember, they're very good. Two, three, four year olds are good with just making those sounds. And you're linking them up in the shapes that we make in the language. And of course, I'm also using rhyme. But as actually, again, remember what I talked about, that cognitive load? The light shines through the window. Well, it's obvious to us lot, we know the light shines through the window. But I'm making explicit a piece of what is actually scientific knowledge. That is, light travels. In fact, it's quite mysterious how light travels. But anyway, I'm actually saying that there, aren't I? And then the child is discovering her body. Here's my nose and here's my elbow. It's one of the fun things about being nought to five. He's discovering your nose, your body, your eyes, all those things. What do they do? And then what do they do with bits of your body? Well, my feet are standing on the floor. And then what else do feet do? They take you out the door. So I've made all that knowledge, if you like, fun because it's got rhythm and rhyme, and it's also the beginning of a story. Yes? And then the next poem is, there's someone in the mirror. Look, can you see? It looks like they're talking. Is it them or is it me? I've gone away now. I'm not saying where. I can't see the mirror. Am I still there? Now, there's a mirror and there's a mystery. The mystery of mirrors, because when you look in a mirror, you're in it. So if you go away, are you still in the mirror? Well, all of us sitting here, well, of course, we know we're not in the mirror. But why would a child know that they're not in the mirror? There isn't a reason, is there? I mean, it's a very complicated reason to do with reflection and stuff like that. But it is actually a mystery. And one of the great things about books and poems and stories and all that is they deal in the mysteries of the world around us. And particularly poems and stories for little children. Do you know, one of the first rhymes deliberately written for children, put in a book and called A Rhyme For Children, was Twinkle, twinkle, little star. You know the words, let's do it. I won't sing it. Twinkle, twinkle, little star. Go on, say the next line for me. How I wonder what you are. Up above the sky, is it up, 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 up above the sky? How's it go? Up, up above.
Up above the world so high.
Up above the world so high. Yeah?
Like a diamond in the sky.
Like a diamond in the sky. Twinkle, twinkle, little star, how I wonder what you are. You had to think about that now, and you're a three year old or a four year old. First of all, is the idea of it up above the world so high? Well, how high is it? Well, wow, how high? Millions of miles is the answer. So he's lots there. And what's it like? And that's what poems and stories do all the time. Posh word for it is called figurative language. That's what we, most famous figurative language stuff we do. They're metaphors, similes and personification. Those are the ways we do it. We say things are like something else. So we do it all the time. If I say, oh, come on, now, come on, pull your socks up. But I don't really mean pull your socks up, do I? So that's a metaphor. So I'm saying, so we do those things all the time. And we just go out for the rest of the day and just count as people are talking to you, how many times we're using metaphors and similes. And we know that for children on the autistic spectrum, this actually gives them quite a lot of difficulty. And so writing has got a particular function in, in fact, for children to become aware that it's a difficulty is one of the routes that children on the autistic spectrum have to make. Because you can say to a young child on the spectrum, pull your socks up, and they will try to pull their socks up. Yes? Because they will take it literally. So one of the discoveries for all children is these metaphors, similes, personifications, you know, what does the wind say? Why is it making the trees bow down and pray? You see, something like that, that's personification. All right. Uh, these are difficult, but also it's actually how we do it. It's all part of everyday speech. Yeah? So language is full of these hidden mysteries. So the mirror one was a mystery. And then here we go. Where's my brush? I'm all in a rush. Where's my brush? I've got to brush my teeth. Rushy, 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 brushy, brushy, brushy. Bish, bish, bish. I'm all in a hurry. I'm all in a worry. I've got to have a wash. Hurry, hurry, hurry. Worry, worry, worry. Whoosh, whoosh, whoosh. I really hope I can find the soap. A splish, a splash, a splosh. Washy, washy, washy. Sploshy, sploshy, sploshy. Spooch, spooch, spooch. Now, there's a poem about the bathroom, the rest of it. You can make up your own. My idea of this book is that people will read things like that and then somewhere or another, just if you like, morph into making up their own. So next time you go to the bathroom, even if you don't remember the whole poem or even a bit of it, you can use, look at the way I'm using language, to make up your own. So you can use all poems and stories as a platform for your own way of doing it. Connect it back to books because then you're also connecting it to the written word and all the problems that we know about children lifting these little black and black squiggles that are on a page. You know, why does that squiggle make you say wuh? Why does that squiggle make you say muh? You know, or my, in fact, I should say, doesn't make you say muh at all. Makes that two squiggles make you say my. Um, so why? It's a mystery. It's, and it was because, you know, thousands of years ago, people just came up with little signs to start off with. They mostly made the signs, you know, look like the thing that they were talking about. So, you know, that you had what the Egyptians, the Egyptian hieroglyphs. And then somebody had a great idea that you could take the hieroglyph, you could take the first sound of the thing you were saying and then make that a sound you could then use for other words. So you did a picture of a bed. You took the b sound and then you could use the b not only for bed, but also for big and brother. That was what they had to do. But it's very mysterious for children. And when you bring them up close to a book and looking at it and learning the words, some people think that's bad. I think it's great. So there's an argument about that. But learn the words in poems and stories, and then they read them like that. I think it helps them get it into their heads, how it all works. Okay. So let's see whether we'll do one more poem here. Here's one, it's a bit of a jazz poem, this one. So it's called Hip Hop Happy. And I'm just exploring that, those phonemes around ip, ap, op. So what we do in English, slightly different in other languages, is that quite often we have a vowel sound. And we say the vowel sounds are ae, i, ou, but actually, it's a bit more complicated than that. Ow, we've got all those open sounds, they're all vowels. So think of bored. And we have to make that or, we have to make that with lots of different letters, don't we? Or, okay, so, and then we stop them with consonants. So I like playing with that idea that you can muck around with the ow bit, but have the same ending, that consonant. Yeah? Give me a hip, give me a hap, give me a hip, hap, happy. Give me a tip, give me a tap, give me a tip, tap, tappy. Give me a pip, give me a pap, give me a pip, pap, pappy. Give me a zip, give me a zap, give me a zip, zap, zappy. Yeah? So what I'm showing them is that you can have those last bits of the word, the ip, op, ip, ap, and change the beginning bit. So we started with a huh, that was the hip bit. Then we had the t, then we had the p, and then we had the z. So I'm showing them that you can play around. It's a bit like Lego. But one way to think of words is that, and the posh word for it, if you want it, it's called morphology, is that language and our words, we can take bits out, move bits. So if you think of a word like appear, we can stick a bit on the beginning of it and it becomes disappear. We can stick a bit on the end of it, it becomes disappearing or disappearance. Yeah? And you can think of lots and lots of it. So you can have a bit in the middle and we can add bits. Well, in its own way, I'm playing with that idea that you can have a, a core bit of a word, an ip, op, ap, ip, and then you can put different bits on the front. So it's teaching children that language is like, as I say, it's like Lego. Now, we learn that, just, children will learn it. There'll be children doing that by the time they're three or four. You know, you'll hear children say, I goed, meaning I went. Well, we say it's wrong, and it is in a way wrong. But actually, what they're doing is doing something very clever. What they're doing is hearing that one of the ways we say something happened is to put a d on the end of the main bit of the word, which is the verb that we call it. We don't always do it because some, some words aren't like that. But they hear that one way we do that, all right, is to stick a d. So then they take a word like go and then think, oh, well, oh, I see how we do it for the past. Stick a d on the end. So they say, I goed. They're only wrong in the sense that, well, we've got this other way of doing it. We go, which is really annoying. We say went. Okay? Though you'll actually hear people around the country got other versions of it. I can show you. So there's an example of the way children are learning that thing that I'm putting in the poem. All right? And then maybe we'll do one more. I thought I'd have fun with the alphabet. Okay? So now I often play alphabet games with children because it's all part of the mystery. So of course, as you know, we all spell the alphabet in Britain at any rate, more or less the same way, A, B, C, D and the rest of it. And obviously, kids, and now these days in Britain are, are come up against hearing Americans say that the Z is a Z, which is always good fun as well because it suddenly reminds you that these things are, are what we call arbitrary. We just call these things something, but then you go somewhere else and then someone's calling it something different. So, you know, say, Americans call it Z. So I thought I'd have fun with the alphabet. And I looked at it and worked out that, of course, there's lots of rhymes in the alphabet. Give me an A, then a B. Give me a C, then a D. Clap your hands and it's E, F, G. Then it's H, I, J. Give me a K, then it's L and M. Give me an N. Now it's O, P, Q and R, S, T. Then follow that with a U and a V. I know who, it's a double U. X, Y, Z, it's time for bed. So if it's, this book comes out in America, what are they going to do with that? They've got to make up a new line. X, Y, Z. What rhyme, what are you going to come up with? I'm looking at you.
It's time for tea.
It's time for tea. There you go. You see, you're all poets. Yeah. Or nice to see or something. I don't know. Got to think, or, you know, I'm talking about me. There's lots of lovely rhymes with that. So Americans, of course, the American edition, I'm looking forward to seeing it when it's, my poem's going to be translated. And then I tell you what, I keep an eye on the time. Yes, I've just finished with a little game that I play with children. Just a little bit older than maybe some of yours, but maybe about sort of six and seven. I get them to say, to spell out a word, everybody. So you can spell it with me. E, V, E, R, Y, B, O, D, Y. Then I say, that's the old fashioned way of spelling. I've got a brand new way of spelling. What we do is we knock one letter off the front of the word at a time. So we start with everybody. You lose the E and you've got verybody. You lose the V and then you've got everybody. You lose the E, you've got rybody, wybody, body, oddy, dy, why? And you put it all together and you've got everybody, verybody, everybody, rybody, wybody, body, oddy, dy. Whoops, I got it wrong. Everybody, verybody, everybody, rybody, wybody. Got it wrong again. Everybody, verybody, everybody, rybody, wybody, body, oddy, dy, why? That's it, I got it right that time. So there we are. It's quite hard to do. So it's a nice challenge for children. And you can take any word you like and play around with it like that. Like calamity. Calamity, alamity, lamity, amity, mighty, ity, tai, why? Or their favourite shampoo. Just think about it for a moment. Shampoo, hampu, ampu, empu, pu, oo, oh. And you can imagine, that's quite a tickle. So there we are. I'll finish there for the moment. And if any of you've got any questions, I think they can be relayed to me, uh, either by Gareth or by Carolyn. I'm not quite sure who's going to be the relay, whether it's going to be the Sufficiency and Sustainability Manager or the Strategic Lead I T T Primary. So it's, it's going to be a tricky one to see.
You've got me.
It's the Sufficiency and Sustainability Manager, which is a poem in itself.
Yeah. So if anyone's got any questions, they want to just pop in the, in the chat so we can get around to everybody. So there's, um, we haven't got questions in the chat at the moment, but some may very well appear.
There's some hands up, aren't there? I can see.
Yeah, so we've got one, we've got one hand up there. So let's go to, um, the hand we've got up there says, um, well, the email says Simon. Doesn't it look like Simon?
Simon Thompson.
For us?
Simon Thompson's got, or Connie Forman?
So Connie, have you got, should we go to Connie then? Connie, have you got a question you'd like to ask? We'll come back to Simon in a moment. So Connie has just popped in the chat that has son writes and illustrates his own books and would rhyming be better is the question.
Ah, uh, it's not a good, it's not better or not better. It's horses for courses, he said, rhyming. It's horses for courses. So you have to work out, you know, what's the best way to tell a story? So if you think of stories that you know and love, let's say you like Little Red Riding Hood. Well, most people get Little Red Riding Hood without it rhyming. On the other hand, people make up stories that rhyme a lot these days, on the, like, like Julia Donaldson, the greatest poet-rymer for young children, I think there has ever been. I mean, she is just quite, quite stunning. We've got an absolute treasure in our midst, uh, of someone who can write, think of The Gruffalo and the, you know, the smartest giant in town, Stickman. These are, these are works of genius, they really are. They're absolutely incredible, and you must, must read them with your children. Um, I did with mine, and, um, The Witch on the Broom, you know, Room on the Broom. Absolutely fantastic. But, you know, we're, we're not all Julia Donaldsons. And so when you're making up a story, work with the strength that you've got. If you've got, if you're good at repetition, then work with repetition. If you're good with image, you know, we're talking about metaphor earlier, weren't we, figurative language? Then work with that, yeah?
Yeah, he's doing a series at the moment, um, The Adventures of Suburban Pets.
I love it, what a great idea. Superb idea, yes, brilliant, do it, yes, great, it'd be a great book.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, we've got the email that says, um, so I'm not, I'm not sure if you know, but it says, Simon. Do you want to come in with a question? You've had your hands up very patiently for a while.
Yes, yes, um, I'd like to see my daughter be linguist. Uh, when I play, I do like, um, floor puzzles for the alphabet. So how, I just getting, I think she's getting confused, because for example, I say A for apple. But we, in Spanish, the M is manzana. It means, apple means in Spanish, manzana. So how can I, it's getting confused how to raise, how to, for her to learn the alphabet with a confusing in both languages.
Yes, I would, how old is your daughter, you say, year one?
Three and a half.
Three and a half, don't worry, it's too, it's too early, the alphabet is a very, um, it's, it's like sums, it's, it's a complicated thing. I do, don't worry about the alphabet, just make sure you read books that the child can join in with and enjoy. I mean, obviously, I'm saying things like Bear Hunt, but not only, you know, obviously, I'm saying a book like that, where the child can join in with, as it happens, there's a Spanish version of that. Uh, vamos, uh, os casar.
Casar.
Yes, casar. So there's a, a Spanish, but the point is, the most important thing for your child is to be able to hear the sound of English in the books. And the alphabet will come later, and you can rely, school will teach that. And school will also teach what they call the alphabetic principle. That's to say, how the letters make the sounds, how the sounds make the letters. Okay, so you don't have to worry about that, just enjoy books. Because it's, it will be, it's very difficult, you know?
Yes, very difficult.
Yes, much too difficult for a three year old, it's too difficult for me. You know, and, and also, of course, the way you say the letters. I mean, I, I, I tried to say the alphabet in French, A, B, C, D, U, you know, E. I, I, you know, it's quite hard, G, is it G or is it G? You know, I get muddled. So, you know, and I'm seventy-six, and I've been trying it all my life, so, you know, your kiddie has only had three years. So don't worry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So there's just some themes coming up in, in the chats, Michael. Um, so around actually, um, so could you suggest some particular books to encourage children with, you know, to develop that love of reading? Or are we reluctant to read? Or maybe the language development isn't quite where you might have been, so children during lockdown that maybe literally not where they would have been if we hadn't had lockdown?
Yes, I think, um, what you must do, absolutely central, must be exposing your child to a, to a variety of books. And if you go to Book Trust website, Book Trust, okay? They've got lists and lists of books for different categories of reader. For very young ones, for older ones, uh, with subjects and so on. And then if you're interested in books on topics, there is a, a website and a Twitter handle called Books for Topics. Okay? And then, uh, in fact, if you use some of the online book companies, they do group books for you as well, according to themes. So if you're thinking about books on emotions or books on trains or something, just Google them, put, put the subject like books on trains, children's books on trains in double quotes, and it'll come up. But the librarian will help you. I can't speak more highly of libraries and librarians. So if you want, if you're thinking, oh, how do I get my kiddie interested in this, or what kind of book? Go to the library, use the library, um, and, and they will help you find books and so on. But Book Trust is a tremendous resource for you for lists of books. I mean, I can say book titles, books that my kiddies love, but it doesn't mean that your kiddie will love it. So one of the key things to teach children is how to browse for themselves. In other words, to see a pile of books and go, oh, I have that one, no, I have that one. Oh, let me try that one, oh, I don't like that, I like that. That gives the child what we call agency. The child is in charge of what it is they want. Even when they say I don't like it, that's actually important. To be able to say I don't like that, because that's about monsters, that's great. They're using their agency. I want a book about fairies, or I don't want a book about fairies, I want a book about monsters. All that is important chat. And don't forget to chat with your kiddies, give them space and time to just talk about the book, if they want to, and go, oh, right, what are you reading? Oh, yeah, what's that about? Oh, yeah, lovely, yes. And also tell them about the books that you liked. If you've got some of your old books, show them to them. Don't force them on them, don't say you're going to really love this book. I mean, I've got my old copies of Beatrix Potter, Squirrel Nutkin, I love Squirrel Nutkin. But I've never forced it on my children, I did try to read it to them once, they went, oh, no, thank you, Dad. Oh, they don't want Squirrel Nutkin? I was distraught, no, they wanted something else, fair enough, had to live with that, okay?
That's fantastic, and thank you for that, and I think that's really insightful. I'm, I'm just mindful of time, we're probably going to need to, to finish there. If there's any further questions, if people just pop them in the chat, and we'll see if we can get some responses, um, you know, out to you by email. But I just want to finish by saying thank you so much, Michael, such an enjoyable memorable session. Um, the comments in the chat, people have clearly been enjoying, there's lots of appreciation there. Bear Hunt's getting lots of shouts out there.
Hey! Ah, it's a bear! Ch-ch-ch, back through the cave, tiptoe, tiptoe, tiptoe. Ah, back through the snowstorm, woo, back through the forest, stumble trip, stumble trip, stumble trip, back through the mud. Back through the water, back through the grass, swishy, swishy, swishy. Home, open the door upstairs, dum, 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 dum. Ah, we forgot to shut the door, dum, 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 bam, back upstairs, dum, 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 dum. Along the passage, into the bedroom, into bed, under the covers. We're not going on a bear hunt again.
And what a fantastic way to finish. And, and I think you've just reminded us there so much about the importance of telling the poems and the rhythm and the getting us involved in that, and this session has been fantastic. Um, a few takeaways to me, just love the notion of, of what you talked about, the sound of writing and the language is like Lego, so I think there's some, I mean, we'd all have our own takeouts there, but, um, fantastic ones for me, and I don't know about everybody else, but I want to know more about Fluff the Farting Fish.
Hmm.
They'll find out about Fluff the Farting Fish.
Yes, indeed, it's a, it's a crucial epic story, and here it is.
Fantastic.
Illustrated by the wonderful Tony Ross, there you go.
Fantastic, yeah, so brilliant. So, um, just to let everybody know, we, we are arranging another session with Michael in October, um, a face-to-face session, so we'll, um, details on that will come up before the end of term. Um, so we'll share that with you. But thank you again for everyone that's attended and giving up your time. Thank you again to Michael, what a great time, and what a great way to spend an hour on a Thursday morning. Thank you so much, everybody, thank you.